Okay, we're calling this meeting to order. I'll remind all councilors and people that this is being livestreamed. Anyway, we'll start with, and those who will, or can stand will have a moment of reflection. Thank you. Okay, you can disclose any pecuniary interest at this point in time or any point in time through the meeting. And I need a motion to confirm the agenda, but before I ask for that, we are going to have one additional item for the closed session regarding an identifiable individual. So if I could have a motion to move by Bob Wilhelm, second by you McDermott. Those in favor, carry it. Then we move on to consent agenda. We have items 5.1 to 5.13. Does anyone want to see anything? Remove, discussed? Not seen any hands in here on the screen. I have a motion that council receives the consent agenda items 5.1 to 5.13 and approves the October 15, 2020 council minutes. Move by Doug Kellum. Bob Wilhelm. Those in favor, that's carried. Okay. Moving on again. Page, and we start with public meetings, hearings, and delegations. We have none. We're then going to move into staff reports. First item on the agenda is performance appraisal update. And I know it says CIO, but I'm assuming Tyler.
So through the warden, we do have the delegation piece for 7.2.1. We can bring them in now if you want them to speak.
Do they actually want to present as a delegation to be here for questions?
They're here for questions. If you want to bring them in for the planning piece, you can just.
They can come in now. Well, actually, let's wait until after we get the. We're gonna, we're gonna do the performance appraisal first, and then I will mention that when we get to 7.2. Okay, so we just need to get Sally on the screen here. Or Mary, what am I saying? Sally's not here, because I'm still thinking about planning. So what Tyler was referring to is we do have an individual here from the planning consulting firm that is with regards to 7.2.1. And he's going to be available for questions because Sally is absent today. We're just waiting for a body. I didn't think you were going to be this quick.
No.
How's everybody's internet working? Is it a little slow in here today?
Yeah, mine's really slow.
Yeah, so is mine. I'm hooked, but it's just incredible.
Did everybody read that thing from Enbridge in full detail?
Nope.
Oh my God.
Did you have five hours?
Well, if you actually look through the numbers, they were showing the numbers for the different zones.
Yeah.
But they were all the same, except for two. And I couldn't quite figure that out. What they're preparing you for is a big increase.
Huge.
Just so you're aware. I didn't go over the ground rules, but surely we have them by now. Well, I'm waiting for Marion to show up. Leave your seat mask on. Make sure you fill your form out, turn it in. And here comes Marion in the side door. Morning, Marion.
Yeah, morning.
Where are you going? You're up.
Oh, wow. Okay, sorry. I was at the courthouse first. Um, yeah, so through the warden, or the warden council, so with regards to the performance evaluation system, this is something that we've been talking about for probably about a year now since I started with regards to. So you can hear me, sorry. And so with the performance evaluation system, this is something that has been asked for an update. Our performance evaluation system hasn't been updated in several years. And so what we've done is we've created templates for major groups of employees. So we have one for senior management team. So those would be people who regularly present to council and report to the CAO. What's included in this performance evaluation is CAA would go through an evaluation, not just of performance, but also how the employee measures against our values, well, how they interact and work with council. So that's the major difference with the leadership portfolio. We do have another individual performance evaluation for managers. This is a little bit different. So this is people who have people reporting to them. So any type of staff report, they would not be a regular at council. So that's why we developed this specific plan that really looks at how they manage and get the work done. And then we have a staff performance evaluation, which is again, a little bit of a lighter weight. It allows a manager and staff member to discuss their goals and performance that they're going to achieve throughout the year. And lastly, we have a public works template, which really just is more of how did someone complete their tasks? Is it being done in a timely manner? The way in which the tasks are done and prioritized, are they, you know, completing them in a safe and efficient manner, et cetera. So we've really worked to gear it towards our target staff members in ways that really make sense. We've been testing them with our employees as well, and we've had a really positive response. And lastly, we've actually brought them to West Perth as well, who is adopting and using them as their templates, starting in the new year. So paramedics for both PD and Teamsters, those templates are not included yet. We are going to be working with the union just to, there is a component to when they get to their staff increases, but everything is through the collective agreement. So that's why those two templates are not included at this point in time, but that would be in agreement with the unions. I'll take any questions. I will say this process is geared to start with the calendar year effective January 1st. And so senior management team is going to be taking the first crack at cracking the balls at our next management team meeting. So I think that'll be great. So all senior leaders will have their performance plans that way for the next year, which will be able to cascade throughout the organization.
Okay, questions for Marion. Todd?
Thanks, Marion. A massive amount of work there. Appreciate what is happening. That's very exciting. Could you explain to me how the corporation's strategic plan will be leveraged in helping employees set their objectives for a year and in serving as the basis for evaluation?
Definitely. So if you'll notice on the first page of the senior leader template, we actually have for senior management team to insert the strategic plan goals that they are visible for. And then from there, they're going to create the goals that cascade and link to those strategic plan goals and set them for the year. The hope is from that, it will drive down to their appropriate managers and staff base. So we should be able to see a full cascading effect in terms of as a staff member, I can see exactly what my manager is doing and how that aligns to the strategic plan. And that's something that we are going to do. HR has developed a training plan. So when we work through it with senior management team next week, we're also going to have a PowerPoint as well that they can bring back to their managers and also for staff. This is why we're doing it, and this is why it's so important.
Todd?
Just one more, and maybe this is a little too tactical, but you did seem to suggest that with the cascade that you're building, which is a wonderful idea, there'll be a lot of line visibility from top to bottom in the organization. Can you comment on how you intend to make that happen?
Yes, definitely. So again, the first starting point is actually next week when we discuss and also set some common senior management goals as well. We know right now customer service is of utmost importance. So I foresee each of our senior leadership team, when we're discussing our goals, we're putting customer service first. And then how can we link our regular daily activities to the goal of improving customer service throughout the county? When we look at the strategic plan goals, we're doing the same thing. So we have our values, we have our, what we need to achieve over the next three years, and sort of chunk it out into pieces for the calendar year. So each time when we, when we start to develop and build our smart goals, they're not just, you know, points or, you know, aimless targets. No, these are actual goals that have a realistic, time-based, measurable outcome. So that way throughout the year, either for an employee's probationary period, at six months, you can look back and just be like, how are we doing? Are we on track to achieve these targets? Where are we? And then from there, either adjust course, maybe change the goal to make it more realistic, or at least report back to council, say, look, we're not going to meet this goal, which is endangering our strategic plan. So objectives. So it just has a lot of checkpoints and balances that I think will help us really guide and temper our staff into, you know, here's, this is exactly what we're aiming for, and this is how we're going to get there.
Other questions? Just making sure here, because it takes a little longer. I don't see any hands. Thank you, Marion. Excellent report.
Yeah.
So I do have a motion here, and I just want to just clarify one thing, because we are changing around the performance appraisal review. So my motion says Perth County Council receives a performance appraisal update report for information. Do we also need to approve that?
A policy. Yeah, through, through the warden, I would add to that, and direct staff to update policy.
Okay, so I'm going to change the wording I have here that says Perth County Council receives the performance appraisal update report for information and has staff update the policy information. Anybody have an issue with that? Do I have a mover and a seconder? Todd Kasenberg moves. And Matt Duncan seconds. Well, any, any last chance for questions? Those in favor, carry. Thank you. Excellent. So we'll probably see later. Okay. We are now moving on. And we get to the planning portion, 7.2.1. And if we could add our individual there, Andrew Heard. We have David. There's Andrew. Is it Henry or Heard? Oh, Henry. Andrew Heard, sorry. My mistake. Okay, so Sally has written this report. She's unavailable. So David, are you taking over at this point in time?
That is correct, Warden Herson.
You're up.
Okay, thank you, Warden. Warden, members of council. Following a report that's been prepared by our manager of planning, concerns modification to a draft plan of subdivision in the township of Perth East by WMJ Geese Construction Limited. The proposed modification applies to draft plan subdivision file PE 1401. The original draft plan was approved July 15, 2014 by county council, and subsequently was subject to a extension of approval in 2019. Essentially, the proposed modifications to the existing draft plan incorporate four separate modifications, all that the planning office has deemed to be minor in nature. The first is an introduction of a walkway block to provide additional pedestrian connectivity to a nearby trail for the development. This would propose the introduction of a new block, Block 72, which would, which would provide a connection for this pedestrian walkway. The second modification proposed is renumbering of two existing blocks as future development blocks. This would, these blocks represent development reserves at the southern portion of the development for future extensions of Cobalt Street and Coulter Street that were originally shown on the draft plan as blocks B and C. This is really just an administrative change to rename them as Blocks 75 and 76 respectively. And that the intention in the future would be that these blocks would be conveyed to the township of Perth East to hold until any future development on adjacent lands proceeds. The third change is the introduction of semi-detached units to the development. So the proposed revisions would see 12 existing lots that were previously earmarked for a single detached dwellings to now be directed for construction of semi-detached dwellings. So there'd be a total increase of 12 additional units for the development. This would affect lots 19 to 24 and lots 29 to 34 on the draft plan. And these units would front onto the southern side of an extension of Pug Street, which would extend into the development. The last modification is proposed here is the introduction of blocks for drainage control. There's two, was found to be two existing single detached dwellings at 15 and 16 Jolene Court that are located adjacent to the draft plan subdivision that have been experiencing negative drainage impacts. The addition of these two blocks for drainage control would alleviate these offsite impacts for drainage onto adjacent lots. Concern was raised by neighbors that live on Jolene Court that there was existing unsatisfactory drainage that affected their properties. A meeting was arranged between planning staff and the neighbors as well to review a stormwater management plan that was provided by engineering staff from BM Ross Limited. Essentially, the the included drainage measures would ensure that the post-development drainage contributing to stormwater onto Jolene Court would be reduced to 11% of the pre-development impact, as well as ensuring that there'd be reduced runoff rates post-development. Planning staff in our reporting, we can confirm that a written agreement between the developer and the abutting landowners on Jolene Court has been signed to accept these measures for additional drainage control. That is the summary of the four changes that are proposed through this modification to the existing draft plan of subdivision file PE 1401. We are recommending that county council accept our report concerning the draft plan modifications for information, and that county council approve the proposed modifications to the draft plan of subdivision as duly noted. Thank you for your time, council, and I'd be happy to answer any questions concerning the staff report that's before you today.
Okay, any questions for now? We do have Andrew Head here. Technically, he's not allowed to participate in that, but because of Sally's absence, he's here to answer any questions that anyone might have pertaining to this. Do I have any questions for either David or Andrew with regards to this agenda item? Don't see any. Okay, thanks, David. I have a motion, county, that the council of the county of Perth receives a report titled Proposed Modification to Draft Plan Approval of Subdivision File Number PE 14-01 for William J. Geese Construction Limited for information, and that the council of the county of Perth approved a proposed modification to the draft plan approval of subdivision number PE 14-01 by William J. Geese Construction Limited, located at Park Lot 9, Concession 3, formerly in Morningside Township, now in the Milverton Ward. Perth East be approved, subject to the amended conditions as attached. Do I have a mover? Ron Deegan, second by you, McDermott. Any questions or comments? Those in favor, it's approved. Thank you. Thanks, Andrew, even though we didn't really need you. Thanks, David. Okay, moving on. Public Works, John.
Thank you. Good morning, council. Just wanted to take the opportunity first off to introduce Bill Wilson. He's our asset management engineering specialist. Bill started a couple of weeks ago and has just jumped right into things here. So Bill's spent the last 11 years at the township of Perth East as their operations coordinator. And over the years, Bill and I have worked on several joint projects with the county, and he has a very good understanding of our operations, our programs, and certainly our asset software. He really hits the ground running and certainly made the job of orientation and getting them up to speed all that much easier for me. Bill is also the current president of the Association of Ontario Road Supervisors and our local roads association. And through that role, he brings a wealth of industry best practices, a lot of great networking contacts, and certainly some leadership abilities. I'm very excited to have Bill on board, and I know through this role, he'll be a huge benefit to our department and certainly our corporation. This role really aligns very well with their strategic plan and being good stewards of managing our road assets. So Bill, Bill's already done a few reports for me, and we're just going to throw him right into the fire here. So I welcome Bill Wilson, and he'll be presenting our first report.
Thank you, John, and thank you, Warden Herson and members of council. I'm happy to be here. I'm going to meet all of you, some familiar places. Anyways, I will get started here with this report regarding pre-budget approval request for the replacement of vehicle 29, which is a 2007 tandem axle snowplow. We are seeking pre-budget approval for this purchase with the intent of issuing a joint tender with with West Perth as well as Perth South for that replacement. They are looking at similar items. We've done that in the past, and it's, it's, it's worked out well in our favor. As well as the plow equipment, which we are looking to sole source, not through Viking's phase. They are the bodybuilder that has done all the equipment fleet, the box and the plow equipment. I think that's all I have to comment on this report. If approved, we would certainly bring back the results of the tender, as well as some quotations provided from Viking to council for further approval. So if there's any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Welcome aboard. And I have a question for Mayor Wilhelm.
Um, I guess my question is on single source from Viking. Is there not another manufacturer to compare pricing? Because you're looking probably close to $150,000 for the body, and I think you should be looking at other sources and just to keep Viking online.
Yeah, through you, Warden. The other the other bodybuilder that I'm aware of is LaRochelle. They are Eastern Ontario Quebec company. And in the past, we have issued tenders for, and I guess I'm speaking from my previous experience, and they, they did not provide any response to the tenders that were put out. And also, the, the equipment and the location of Viking, our mechanics and operators are all very familiar with the with the equipment and the setup that Viking provides. And they're, they're located in Mount Forest, which makes it very easy to, to get parts in event of an emergency or breakdown.
John?
Thank you, Warden. Maybe further to that is the entire county fleet and as well as our lower tier fleet are pretty much all box and snowplow equipment is from Viking. So we're, you know, with that, it's, it's very beneficial to, to sole source that as well. This is in keeping with the last time we went out, the joint tender where the chassis is tendered out and the box and snowplow equipment is sole sourced through, through Viking. That was previously done by West Perth in 2019. Along with that, previous tenders that have been done, whenever we go out, whether we're tendering it separately and/or having just one tender through the chassis builder, they always, their pricing always is included with a bid from Viking's seat. So it's this is the way to go here just for the consistency with our, with our fleets.
Other questions? Daryl?
Yeah, thanks there. So what you're saying there, John, is essentially is they like dealing with Viking, prefer to deal with that with the package right to us.
Yeah, through you, Warden Herson. That's, that's correct. Typically, all the dealers around here, when they go to get pricing for the box or plow equipment, their go-to is Viking. There, we've, in the past, we have had another bodybuilder do some of that. It's been probably in the order of 12 to 13 years since that they were last in, in the market, doing that kind of work. We have had no issues with Viking and, you know, and any, and any problems are very quickly rectified. That being said, because of the nature of their business and because they are one of the only ones providing that, they are very busy. And this is why we're out early to get pre-tender approval because of the timeframe that this takes to get. So it takes time to get the chassis, and then that needs to get to the bodybuilder. And from there, the, the whole process is it's about a year and a half. So we're just hopeful that we can get this in and get this in our fleet, hopefully by next winter season.
Other questions or comments? Just got a quick comment. I know exactly why councillor Wilhelm asked that question. There was a big report released on Monday afternoon with regards to sole, like one single source for procurement, referred to the city of Collingwood, and there was millions of dollars wasted. And now with the transparency and everything, they're going to be looking very close at municipalities who are single sourcing for procurement. But that's why I'm sure why you asked that question. Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, everyone, every municipality is going to be under the spotlight now.
Okay. There's no more questions or comments? I have a motion that Perth County Council receives a pre-budget approval slash tandem plow truck replacement report for information, and that Perth County Council authorized pre-budget approval to initiate the capital procurement process for the replacement of V029 tandem axle cab and chassis, and that Perth County Council authorized pre-budget approval to initiate the capital procurement process for the replacement of the V029 plow equipment through a single source purchase from Viking Serves Limited. Moved by councillor Kellum, seconded by councillor Ait. Do I have any questions or comments? This one's on our replacement schedule anyway, right, John? Okay. Those in favor, carry. Thank you. Seems you got most of the reports today, John. Keep going.
Thank you, Warden Herson. Next report should be the always stop at Perth Line 26 and Perth Road 113. Last year in the summer, there was an always stop that was created at the intersection of Perth Line 26 and Perth Road 113. And that was done for safety reasons when the MTO did the construction work. at Perth Line twenty-six and Highway seven for the roundabout. Perth Road one thirteen was used as a detour route. And for safety purposes, we asked them to install an always stop there. That was very effective during the course of that construction and we decided to leave that in place. While we did reconstructed Perth Road one thirteen and Perth Road one twelve, Perth South Line twenty and Perth East Line twenty-nine this summer. These projects are now complete and now we must face the decision whether to remove or retain the always stop controls at this intersection. A Perth Line twenty-six has always been a through highway right from Highway seven to the town of Tavistock. A Perth Road one thirteen did have the stop controls at the intersection. Previous to this, there'd been a number of reported accidents at this intersection over the years. However, that average occurrence here did not meet the high accident frequency threshold as prescribed in the Ontario Traffic Manual Always Stop warrant. I've listed in the report the volume of traffic here and on Perth Line twenty-six, there's five thousand two hundred and seventy vehicles per day and on Perth Road one thirteen, three thousand nine hundred and seventy-five vehicles per day. This makes this one of the busiest intersections in the county road network. And although this intersection does not meet the always stop warrant, the volume split does fall within the appropriate range. So we only have minor work left to be completed on Perth Road one thirteen. And this always stop has been in place for approximately eighteen months. And we did contact the Stratford Police not only last year, but again this year, just to inquire about accident history at this intersection. And to date, since that always stop has been in place, there have been no reported accidents at the intersection. And as well, we have not received any credible complaints about the always stop. In fact, we've received a number of, of good, positive responses with that in place. There is only one approved always stop within the county road network and this is in the village of Anlory. That was designated in two thousand and six. And as well, that intersection did not meet the Ontario Traffic Manual Always Stop warrant. But it did have a significant accident. Based on sound engineering practices, staff recommended the installation of the always stop there, which was approved by council. Since that installation, there's been a dramatic increase in accidents and definitely severity of accidents. So the always stop at Perth Line twenty-six and one thirteen has been operating effectively since being installed as a safety measure. And while that intersection does not meet the criteria set out in the always stop warrant, the volume split is at an appropriate level for which one we, where we would consider one. Given that recent annexation and the potential industrial development out at the southwest end of Stratford, we expect that that will put a, a lot more volume of traffic and potentially truck traffic on Perth Road one thirteen. We expect that that future, future traffic volume will even go further to equalize the traffic volumes at each leg of that intersection. So what staff is recommending, based on the current and future volume splits, eighteen months of operational effectiveness and consultation with the police on the accident history to keep in place the always stop at Perth Line twenty-six and Perth Road one thirteen. In order to do that, we need to amend bylaw twenty-nine fifty-six, which is designating through highways. And that is said before you today and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, do I have any questions for John?
More comment? I know the neighbors certainly in the area, most of them certainly appreciate it. And they're, my concern is that are we setting a precedent? And we do not, if we're not going to stick to our roads management and how we calculate stops. I would suggest that we have a number of other intersections that maybe should be four-way stops too. And as you indicated, it's a straight through shot from seven to Tavistock with trucks and this is a high-traffic truck area. It's certainly not good for climate with stopping trucks and starting them up again. However, I would support your recommendation.
Councillor Hurlick?
Yeah, if I may, I mean, I'm familiar with the trucking industry too. It's not fun. It's not nice. It's hard on trucks. All these roundabouts and stops, it's added an expense, but at the end of the day, they're, the accidents at some of these intersections are unarguably severe. Bob alluded there, we need to look at some other intersections then. I'm thinking, what are we doing here? There's some up in West Perth. We know where they are. They're nasty. The, the accidents are huge. The fatalities are awful. Is this something that we're going to start looking at? Are we going to step outside of what the province recommends and take this on our own? Are we eventually going to get our fingers slapped? I don't know. Look, a little comment there, maybe, John.
John, through you, Warden Aiterson, yes. Certainly, you know, I've spoke before on some, some different topics. Last council, the one last council meeting was Perth Road one forty, Perth Line ninety-one and also Perth Line forty-four, Perth Road one thirty-five. We do know that, that this is becoming an issue within the county. And, and we know as well through, through the asset assumption process. And to the, the idea of a county road network is to have a lot of through traffic and to transport goods and materials. And so when we, when we recommend an always stop, it's, it's something that we don't, you know, we don't take lightly. It's, however, i- in all likelihood, if we looked at any intersection within Perth County, and that would include the MTO intersections as well on the highways. It's, it's highly unlikely that any of these intersections would need an always stop warrant under the Ontario Traffic Manual guidelines. And I think the last council meeting I was suggesting is, you know, we need to take a further look. Number one, at our, our accident history and where, where are fatalities occurring? And come back to council with some ideas on how we can better handle that moving forward. I, I certainly have the same concerns that councillor, councillor Wilhelm said here. And are we setting a precedent? And, you know, we're, we're not intending that every intersection be an always stop. However, I think we need to certainly look at the criteria and maybe set something. So that I do, now that we've got Bill, Bill Wilson on, on board here, that is something that we are looking at. And we have reached out to the OPP and hope to be meeting with them very shortly to see what kind of information they can provide us in, in assisting us with moving forward with some of these things. So, so thank you. Councillor Wilhelm? Just an FYI, there at our last police service ward meeting, we spoke with the Stratford Police Chief on sand speed, et cetera. And he's going to put together a report and I'd be happy to share that with you, John. And hopefully he comes up with some ideas. I know he's going to reach out to other areas and see if they had any ideas. But I don't think we're the only county that has issues with severe accidents at intersections.
Anyone else? Just a quick comment. Tuesday at our Perth South council meeting, I mentioned that this was on the agenda for Thursday because it is Perth South. I got nine emails, texts and phone calls from Tuesday till last night, all supporting this. And the number one thing there, everyone said was a reduced or lack of accidents. And this is, this is over the years been traditionally a really bad intersection. There's been a lot of people, method demise at that corner. I fully support leaving that in here. The one thing too, you talk about truck traffic and I know councillor Hurlick sees a lot of the truck traffic go by his place. But if you're sitting out there at night or blowing snow in some of those places along one thirteen, the truck traffic between Stratford and going down one thirteen towards Woodstock is phenomenal. Because all the feeder plants are getting filled up for the morning run at, or emptied out for the morning run at Toyota. And I would think there'd be far more truck traffic on one thirteen than there is on Perth Line twenty-six. And that does give, if everybody stops, gives those trucks a chance to get across the road. Safety is our ultimate goal here. We've had this discussion, John and I, and different people back since we've had a couple of really bad accidents in the county. And we're doing our best, but, you know, I have a saying, but I'm not sure I should say it right now. Yeah, you can put all the stop signs and flashlights in you want, but if people don't stop at them, there's not much we can do. But that's just kind of helps reduce the risk, I think. Anyway, having said that, I have a motion. Perth County Council receives the always stop slash Perth Line twenty-six at Perth Road one thirteen report for information. And that Perth County Council designate the intersection of Perth Line twenty-six and Perth Road one thirteen as an always stop by amending Schedule A of bylaw two nine five six designating through highways, moved by councillor Wilhelm, seconded by councillor McDermott. Any more comments or questions? Those in favor, it's Carrie. Thanks. Significant weather event, John?
Thank you, Warden Aiterson. This report, Bill had a good hand in writing this one here. Of course, we met all the public works leads at the county. The lower tiers in the town of St. Mary's met in, in October. And one of the things we discussed in, in our meeting was the significant weather event. And this is a, a recent amendment to the minimum maintenance standards for municipal highways under the municipal act. And this allows a municipality to declare a significant weather event based on adverse and severity of a, of a snowstorm. The, the county should assign delegated authority to its staff, the appropriate staff members in order to enact this section of, of the minimum maintenance standards. This just sort of aids us in, in our winter efforts. You know, we, we, we discussed this at our meeting that this is just one tool that we can use. Of course, that meeting revolved around a lot of COVID contingency plans. And I think it's fair to say that if COVID should impact any one of our operations, that could have a significant effect and impact on, on our services, certainly in the wintertime. This is one tool and it's, you know, not directly related to COVID, but it is directly related to weather. And should we have, should we know that a significant storm is coming in? We can declare this significant weather event, which basically just gives us a reprieve from the minimum maintenance standards until we can get out on the roadways and get them cleared up and, and back working again. So, and by the county declaring a significant weather event doesn't necessarily mean that the local municipality has to declare one. I think you'll be seeing at all your local councils, this, this matter coming forward. And you'll be likely looking at, at this, doing the designation by law of authority at your local municipality as well. So all this is saying is that if the county declares a significant weather event, we think it, either a portion or the whole county will be impacted by this winter event. And we suspect that the severity and duration of it may, may affect our ability to meet the minimum maintenance standards. That doesn't mean if that local municipality feels that they are able to weather the storm, so to speak, and, and still meet those minimum standards, they do not have to necessarily declare that significant weather event based on the counties. So we would obviously, in order to do this, we're, we just don't do this because we think that, that whether we're getting reports from Environment Canada and our, and our weather services. We check that three times daily and continually monitor that on an ongoing basis. So there is a lot of documentation that, that comes with this and this is just not something that you would, would do willy-nilly. If there is any questions, we're just seeking council approval to update the delegation of powers and duties to allow the director of public works and or their designate to declare a significant weather event. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions for John or Bill?
I guess we all know that we can have some challenges in the winter. And it seems like number eight highway is the split. If you're north of number eight, sometimes it's terrible. Or you're south and sometimes it's terrible. But would the county, would you be able to, I guess, split the county in half? Or does it have to be all significant weather event? Through you, Warden Aiterson, yeah, if we're going to declare a significant weather event, it would be, it would be county-wide. You're, you're correct. I think, you know, early in the wintertime, like November, December, when with, with the weather patterns, you typically see those snow squalls off of Lake Huron that will affect more, you know, towards the Strathroy, London area and, and hit the southwest part of Perth County. As winter progresses, those, those squalls typically move more to the, to the north and, and usually around January. Very correct, Highway eight seems to be the dividing line and on the radar, radar, you can likely see the snow squalls beating a path right down Highway eight. Those do tend to move further north as, as winter progresses. You know, I guess this is, this is just one tool that we can use in, in, with, with our winter maintenance program. We have discussed a number of other things and one of them is coming up here right shortly.
Councillor Wilhelm?
Just further to that, I, and, and you touched on it, that it could relieve some of our liability on this. The concern I would have is that, for example, if the county declares and Perth South does not, then you're really opening up a can of worms that, well, is the, something happens. Was the county just looking for a legal liability way out? Because Perth South, for example, didn't declare it. And I'm not so sure if, if we shouldn't be thinking that if the county is going to declare, so should the lower tier municipalities and coordinating with the county. Because I'm concerned that that would certainly open up a can of worms. Through you, Warden Aiterson, those are excellent comments. And, and I, and I would agree, and certainly in a decision like this, this is going to be well coordinated, well communicated. There, there is a section that where how we communicate the significant weather event and, and what we base it on. So there, there is protocol and certainly we work very closely with our member municipalities during the wintertime. Our, you know, our operations are somewhat intertwined already. And, you know, we, we are in constant conversation. If we were to either A, close roads, we're, we're obviously doing that in tandem with our member municipalities and the OPPs and or Stratford Police when it comes to Perth South. So, you know, when, when we're making these types of decisions, it's not just a county decision. There would be plenty of conversation with, with the members. And certainly if it's, we, we expect this storm to specifically target one area of the county. And certainly if it's, we we expect this storm to specifically target one area of the county. You know, that's that's likely going to be stated within the communication.
Further questions or comments for John? Laurie?
Through the warden. So this is a solid risk management approach to the work to mitigate the exposure. That the corporation has, should an accident or or someone wish to pursue. Advancing a claim against municipality on a road where we've already declared the significant weather event. So I think. This change in the legislation comes out of the drive from municipalities. To the government to say, please do something about the joint several liability, give us a tool we can use. So as we're looking at our work and looking at the strategic plan and trying to align it, one of the strategic plan. Fundamentals is corporate sustainability and this directly aligns with corporate sustainability because it's about mitigating our exposure. Doesn't relieve us from it, but because it allows us to. Not meet the standards and it'll be very well documented and the decision will be made. As an informed decision from many sources, not. John doesn't want to plow this road today, so it's it'll be a very informed decision, which really. Would work well to be able to put the municipality in a position of defending any action against it or against it. So it's a. I know it's only a couple of pages to write this, but this is a really excellent. Example of risk mitigation and a tool at our disposal that. We should all take advantage of, in all fairness.
Any further comments or questions? I have a motion here. The Perth County Council receives a significant weather event slash Ontario Regulation. Two, three, nine slash O two report for information. And that Perth County Council authorizes the Director of Public Works. Or designate the authority to declare a significant weather event. And that Appendix A of the Corporate Policy CL dash one dot O six. Delegation of Powers and Duties be amended to include the delegated authority. To declare or rescind a significant weather event. Moved by Daryl, seconded by Walter. Last chance for questions or comments. Those in favor, it's carried. Okay, John, climate can, climate change.
Your nature.
Getting her today out there anyway.
Record. Yes, I guess this is the public work show today. I noticed your last council meeting, we didn't have any reports and it only took about a half an hour, so we're glad we can entertain today and. And for them. The next report is an update from our climate change coordinator and you may have already seen an update at the local level. There with representatives informing the representative councils. So back in 2019, a climate change coordinator was hired for a two-year contract. To focus on climate change priorities for all seven area municipalities within Perth County. At to date, that coordinator has updated all the municipal energy conservation demand and management plans. And has also compiled data on our community greenhouse gas emissions. And has developed connections with local stakeholder groups to garner partnerships for future implementation. And and now it's moving into the final steps of the climate change planning process. It should be noted that this contract position expires in February of 2021. Further to that, they are using an online platform to do a community survey. And are and are allowing them to provide the community to provide their input and to vote for actions they support to help reduce our local climate change impacts. That is expected in the very near future. And the results of this survey will help set the priorities of the various possible actions that could be implemented. Over the next 10 years to reduce local emissions. If I can answer any questions, I will try and do so. If not, if I'm not able to, I can ask the climate change coordinator.
Okay, questions for John on the climate change report? Not seeing any. Double check on the screen again. I have a motion. Perth County Council receives the Climate Change Coordinator Update Report for Information. Moved by Todd Casenberg, seconded by. Bob Willough. Those in favor, it's carried. Okay, winter maintenance COVID contingency plan.
Thank you, Warden Hedgeson. Again, I had said before that Public Works Leads from the county, the four local municipalities in the town of St. Mary's. Met in October to discuss the upcoming winter maintenance season. And at the forefront of that meeting was was the possible impacts that COVID could have on on our winter maintenance programs. One of some of the things we did discuss in that meeting is prevention. We we already do share in a number of items within our winter maintenance programs that can be winter materials, loaders. And other things. And we we certainly recognize that one positive test can have a significant impact on the on our response. So prevention. Is first and foremost foremost in our minds. Ensuring that we're all following proper cleaning and disinfecting and and distancing. We also were questioning the priority testing and availability for COVID tests. So the CE, County CEMC played a big part in in this meeting and was very helpful. So they're looking into and helping us with with part of this. We also looked at staffing contingencies within our own operations. Obviously, we're going to look first. Inwards to how we can handle such impacts. The next thing was obviously declaring the significant weather events and the minimum maintenance standards, which we just approved. And you will likely see at your local level as well. The next was to reach out to our contractors and our material suppliers just to ensure that they had. Protocols and contingency plans in place. And certainly with our contractors, did they have the ability to provide any kind of extra support should. Should this affect our winter operations? The last thing we discussed was a mutual aid agreement and that's what this report focuses on. Well, the significant weather event allow, you know, is one tool that we can use with our winter program. Doesn't really help us if if our if our workforce is impacted by COVID. And so so one thing that we have looked at is a mutual aid agreement. And this mutual aid agreement is in is included with the report. We, we don't believe there are any issues with it, but it is still with our lawyers for legal review and I just. Was seeking an update there this morning where where that's at and we expect that to be very, very soon. So this is a mutual aid agreement between the county, the four local municipalities and the town of St. Mary's. And through this mutual aid agreement, it's just allowing support for for any of our public works operations. Should we be impacted by by COVID or or anything else that. That municipality can. Request assistance from from one or or a number of other municipalities. That doesn't obligate to any of the other municipalities to provide mutual aid. They can either perhaps I offer other ideas or. Certainly. Refuse or, you know, perhaps provide different options. The requesting party will be responsible for all actual operating costs for personnel, services, equipment or materials furnished. And this agreement further identifies the provisions of mutual aid, certainly covers off liability and identification. Insurance and agreement termination. If there's any questions, you will, you will likely, we're here today to get this started at the county. And the idea is, is this would be passed on down to the local municipalities. And the town of St. Mary's and everybody signs this agreement. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for John? Bob?
I can't let him off that easy. So the way I interpret this, John, if COVID, and I'll pick on herself, if all our staff got sick due to COVID and had to. Stay at home, we could draw on West Perth or or Perth County. And we would use their equipment if I'm understanding this correctly. For example, would if West Perth is there plowing Persouth Road and. In in Persouth, would they be covered by their insurance? When they're plowing out of their jurisdiction? Or vice versa for the county?
Through you, Warden Hedgeson. And this is one of the reasons why we're just ensuring that we get legal review on this. This is, this mutual aid agreement is is based on. Current mutual aid agreements that Perth County has with Huron County and with Oxford County as well, so. Those those mutual aid agreements were used as a template, so we're fairly sure that. This agreement will cover off all those concerns and I mean, obviously, there's certain logistics and certainly with COVID that. Both municipalities or any municipality that's involved, you know, we need to, we need to further investigate, so. Whether it's okay to just provide personnel. Or if we required to provide not only the personnel, but the equipment, those are things that would be sorted out. But the idea with this agreement is to is to address those liability issues and mitigate any risk. To to the municipality that is helping out in this regard, so. Yeah, that that liability would still be reside with that municipality. And and that doesn't get transferred to the municipality that is that is providing that assistance.
Just comment, excellent report and I'm glad to see you're, guys are being proactive to get this looked after before something happens.
Okay, one quick, John?
Thank you, Warden Hedgeson. I'd just like to acknowledge. Certainly Todd Mccone or C County CEMC for all his help and certainly Rachel Sufferin, who who assists Lori. She she was instrumental in drafting this agreement, so just like to thank them. Obviously, this is. And certainly all the public works staff, this. This is a real joint effort and you know, we all work very well together. And we realize that this may be a difficult winter season. And we're looking for any tools that that might assist us in any one of us in in our operations and. Certainly maintaining those services that are repairs where we need.
Any other comments or questions? No, it's a great report, John. I know I talked to you way back in the summertime there one day about. This particular matter and I'm glad to see we've actually got it put through and. Sort of in place before winter maintenance season does start, although Sunday was an exception. But I told you it was coming. Anyway, one quick question, the legal review. So that is done by one lawyer for all entities? Or is it anticipated that the lower tiers of the town of St. Mary's may have their own lawyer peruse this?
Through, okay, so through the warden. So we send it to, in in a situation like this, where you have. The lower tiers, if you remember, an example before was the community transportation. Agreement and I came out and said, I just need your consent to sign this off, the legal agreement on there, as long as we have at the county level. Consent from the other parties on the page that the one lawyer can review it. It certainly doesn't make sense to have everybody. Contract a lawyer for the same agreement. You know, St. Mary's may wish to do that because they're not part of the county two-tier system. But at the end of the day, certainly the county and the four municipalities, four local municipalities, we would be looking at that housekeeping item. That's that's how we're approaching this. This is about corporate sustainability of all parties on here, so it doesn't work for the county. If in a in a service where we want corporate sustainability for each one of us. If we draft something that has much more advantage to the county force, for example, than. One of the partners that we're looking to to be able to help us, that's just being decent. But I think it might be helpful, given Councillor Willough's questions, for us to maybe do some specific Q and A. You know, even if it's only a couple of questions so that we can share that with the local level. Public Works staff that'll be bringing this forward at the local level, to be able to address those types of questions. So that nobody's left at the table without without those types of answers. They're excellent questions. So, and it's about the, it's about mitigating your exposure. Through a risk management tool, the time to do this, as as you have said, is not when it happens. If if we get a call at the county, you know, from one of our partners, we're going to respond. The time to have your paperwork in order is always in advance, so. And then that way, if there's training needed on some of the equipment or we need people to be familiar with it. There's good opportunity up to the wintertime up. And that comes where we have to jump into action. The CEMC was was great to assist with this, very timely.
Okay, one, and that's great that we're having one because it's no sense reinventing the wheel. However, I'm just, the one extra comment I'm going to add is, we're all basically insured by different insurance companies. We're not all with Frank Collins or whoever. Has there been any discussion with them? Because, you know, they interpret things differently. About themselves as well, as far as covering off. John?
Through you, Warden Hedgeson. Yeah, that's true that we we all, we don't all have the same insurance provider. And that was one thing, certainly from the county perspective, that we did reach out to Aon. And get their opinion on this as well, so I think their their response back is. They were very appreciative of this effort and they weren't aware of any other municipality looking into this, so. They thought, great, you know, great idea and way to go and I think so. I I think that's the sentiment certainly from from our insurance provider. And and I, certainly from the county's perspective and our provider, I don't have any concerns in that regard.
So I have a motion here. The County Council, Perth County Council receives a winter maintenance COVID contingency plan. A mutual aid report for information and Perth County Council approves the mutual aid agreement. Between the county, four local municipalities and the town of St. Mary's. Moved by Todd Casenberg, seconded by Matt Duncan. Last chance for comments or questions. Those in favor, it's carried. Perfect, thanks, John. I guess you get to take a break for a second. Okay, moving on, we are at the PC Connect October update. And do we have Maggie coming on? Up there's Maggie.
Bringing everyone to the warden and on behalf of. Screen committee, I'd just like to provide a brief update on the Perth County Connect. As we're thrilled to be launching on November 16th, we're making a lot of great progress in order to. Best prepare the service for launch in a few short weeks. So first and foremost, I just wanted to confirm that we have secured the required fleet to fully launch both of our routes. So Voyago has acquired two buses to launch our service on November 16th. However, one of the buses will be smaller scale, holding 12 passengers as opposed to 20. So we have positioned our initial launch to be a soft launch until the permanent fleet arrives. And we're able to service our routes with the full 20 passenger fleet. Uh, and we're able to service our routes with the full twenty passenger fleet. Uh, so during the soft launch phase, gathering route data and rider feedback is a top priority for us. So with two buses, uh, we will be launching both routes on full schedules, um, operating Monday to Saturday for eight hours a day. Uh, the timing and schedules have been tested and approved by Voyago and published to our website. Um, however, the exact timing uh may change over the next uh few days or weeks, um, as Voyago continues to run and perfect these new routes. So as for the uh recommendations from the Huron Perth Public Health Unit, uh, the seating on the PC Connect buses will be reduced fifty percent in order to enable um and encourage safe physical distancing. In addition to every other seat being blocked off, passengers who are able will be required to wear face covering. Hand sanitizer and branding masks will be available onboard. An official COVID nineteen uh prevention signage uh will be posted throughout all of the buses. So we are offering uh both PC routes A and B uh for six dollars a ride for adults and five dollars a ride for seniors and students. During the self-launch, we will be offering these fares at fifty percent off as a promotional um effort to encourage and increase ridership. As an entirely new service, we really want to make this as as appealing as possible for residents to go out, jump on the bus and experience um exactly what the PC Connect has to offer. So booking the service uh can be done in three easy steps for residents. Um, and these are also um advertised on our website and all of the marketing material that we'll be pushing out. Uh, so riders will be required to call the toll-free number uh to book the ride the day before their trip, provide their details um of their trip, such as the day, the time, their pickup and their destination, and show up five minutes before the scheduled pickup time uh with the exact change for the fare. So it is important to note that all reservations will take priority over riders at a bus stop who haven't pre-booked the service. Uh, so the website has been updated and will be the platform that hosts all of the most up-to-date information uh of the service. In addition to the website, uh, there'll also be a toll-free number that is managed by Voyago uh that will be available uh starting Monday for residents to call to inquire about the service and as well to book the service. Uh, in terms of marketing, we have started a marketing campaign and will begin to heavily market uh the PC Connect within the next few days, weeks and months into the service. Uh, we have a series of radio ads that are currently ad airing, sorry, uh with the Perth County's local radio station, one hundred point one, The Ranch. Um, a media release will be distributed um as soon as possible, hopefully later this afternoon. Um, and a public notice will be submitted to all of our local papers. As we'll also be leveraging municipal newsletters to inform residents of this new service. Um, all member municipalities and stakeholders such as our BIAs uh will be provided with a media kit within the next few days uh that will include a series of social media posts and captions with guidelines and collateral to promote the PC Connect. In addition to content being pushed out through our own accounts and our stakeholders' accounts, we are running a series of promoted ads that'll target residents throughout the county and surrounding areas. The content for these promoted ads are currently uh being created and will start running heavily um early next week. Another marketing channel that we are leveraging is direct mail. So all residents uh within the county, um Stratford and St. Mary's will receive a postcard that includes key information on the service, uh such as routes and how to book. Um, and in addition to the postcards, uh posters are being developed and will be distributed throughout the county in areas such as town office, rec centers and grocery stores. Outreach will continue uh with local senior organizations, uh church groups and large manufacturers throughout the county. So we are confident that we've developed a big and strong multimedia marketing campaign and we're hopeful that it'll be effective in acquiring PC Connect ridership um within the next few weeks. Um, in terms of ribbon cutting, we uh do plan to host a joint event with the city of Stratford on Tuesday, November the twenty fourth at one P M. Uh, stay tuned for an official invitation within the next few days. Uh, the MP and MPP have been invited to attend the event as well as the Minister and Associate Minister of Transportation. Uh, select media will also be invited to this event, um, however, keeping um gathering restrictions top of mind. Uh, so the first few week of operation, we are also positioning this as a feedback week for all of our key stakeholders. Um, so we're inviting everyone, including council, uh to come out and ride the PC Connect for free of cost um and to provide their feedback and experience on their ride. Um, so official invitations and free ride coupons uh for the feedback week as well will be distributed as soon as possible. Uh, so that does conclude my brief update um on the PC Connect. Um, certainly thrilled to be launching um in a few short weeks. And um I can answer any questions that anyone may have regarding the service.
Okay, thanks, Maggie. Questions for Maggie from anyone? Walter?
Um, this doesn't have to do with your report, Maggie. Good updates. Um, I'm just wondering if you have heard any feedback from other
Sorry, one second here.
Can you hear Walter?
Oh, now we can hear you.
Okay, all right. Uh, just Just wondering if you have had any feedback from other areas that have launched the uh the transportation system, uh what the uptake is from the residents.
I'm just getting our speakers figured out here. Sorry about that. Um, so through the warden, I I was actually able to um sit in on one of the ICT um, which is a Southwest Community Transportation Committee uh meetings earlier this week. So everyone shared their feedback. Um, there has been a large um variety of uptake on services. Um, some of the longer runs have seen a great uptake. Um, I don't have the numbers quite on hand, but I think there had been about three hundred riders um for the month um for Telsenberg and then uh some of the smaller um uh routes had experienced a bit of slower uptake, um but they're working um to increase their marketing on those um to get that uptake. But uh there are some services that are running at full capacity right now, um and others a bit slower uptake. So it's a large scale there.
Thanks, Maggie.
Thanks, Maggie.
Counselor, right?
Counselor, right.
Hello, Maggie. Um, when we started this project, it seems like three years ago, we had talked about how to get people to the bus stops. We we looked at, did we look at subsidizing taxi cabs and whatnot to get them to the the say you're in, you're out wouldn't you live seven miles away? Did we, did we ever figure anything to get them there to help out?
Through the warden, uh, we're still working on solving the first and last mile um challenge that may be faced. Um, we had discussed subsidizing taxi um coupons or rides as you as you spoke to. So we're going to continue to investigate that and see if uh that fits in the the MTO guidelines of our spending. Uh, that is certainly top of mind for us um to figure out through this off-launch and hopefully get that implemented uh as soon as possible.
Other questions? Rhonda?
When we had council on Tuesday night, one of our counselors asked why the bus route was not going through Shakespeare. Uh, maybe you can just refresh us of why, why the routes are where they are.
Sure. So through the warden, uh, the initial route consultation was completed uh before my involvement. However, it's my understanding that uh Shakespeare wasn't included in our initial two routes uh because Stratford does have a route that goes through uh Shakespeare and would be providing that connection. So one of Stratford's runs does travel from Waterloo um through Shakespeare to Stratford and St. Mary's. Um, so they will be um investigating a potential stop or um in Shakespeare for their full launch. Um, so that is where that connectivity with Shakespeare fits into the project. Um, and also just another thing to note, um, is that we have implemented a very customer um centric strategy for the soft launch. Um, so we will be focusing on gathering um as much uh feedback and rider data and data as possible. Um, so we can certainly look into altering one of the PC connector, one of our Perth County routes uh to directly stop in Shakespeare, um, if that demand is proven.
Okay, thank you.
Bob?
Uh, uh, I'm glad to see this finally coming to fruition and and uh it seems like it's been going on forever. And I congratulate you on your uh advertising and such like campaign because it certainly needed that residents that I spoke with herself had no knowledge of any uh bus routes or buses coming into effect in the county. And uh with the with soft launch, I was in favor of that because we're only going to have one bus. But now that we have two buses, I would rather see full launch and uh let's get the word out there as much as we can and uh move forward with that because I think in January is kind of late to do it.
Comments, Maggie?
Thank God, the warden. Thank you for those comments. Um, I think just the um thing to clarify on the soft launch is just that we're positioning that um as kind of introduction to the service, we're running the full routes. Um, however, are offering fifty percent on that soft launch. And we're just really focusing on gathering feedback so that we can make any changes required for that full launch when we receive the full buses, um, hopefully in January. Um, so yeah, we are hoping to get a full marketing campaign out within the next few days and heavily market um everything just as if we would if it was a full service with the full buses.
Other comments or questions?
I'm not on Facebook, but I've had people tell me lately that on Facebook, this actually in the last few days has become more of a discussion period on Facebook. So it it must actually starting to be getting out there. Again, you're getting close to the last date, so I'm anticipating that's why.
Anyway, uh, anything else there, Maggie?
That is all for me. Thanks so much.
Okay, I have a motion that Perth County Council receives the PC Connect slash October Update Report for Information. Move by. Walter, second by Rhonda. Those in favor, carried. Perfect. Thanks, Maggie. Justin?
Thank you.
Okay, we have some bylaws. Do. Uh, first would be in a bylaw three, seven, seven, seven dash two thousand and twenty, be read it first, second and third time and finally pass this fifth day of November two thousand and twenty. Move by. Boss, Counselor Wilhelm, second by Counselor McDermott. Those in favor, carried. Um. We have bylaw three, seven, seven, eight, two thousand and twenty, be read it first, second and third time and finally pass this fifth day of November two thousand and twenty. Move by. Walter, second by Rhonda. Those in favor, carried. Okay, we are ready. Okay, well, first we will do uh notice the motions. Todd?
Just get myself here off mute. Thank you. A council, I intend to introduce a motion at our next meeting uh that reads similar to what I'm about to read. Uh, here's here's the text that at the present time reflects the thinking. Uh, whereas Perth County is a welcoming home to a tolerant, respectful community that celebrates diversity and promotes inclusivity, both in our organization and for all residents, businesses and organizations. And whereas Perth County eschews racism and works to stop it when encountered, therefore be it resolved that the county of Perth establishes a committee on inclusion and diversity to explore and identify relevant actions that represent this county's commitment to a tolerant, respectful community. And that potential actions to be considered by the committee include the creation of an inclusivity and anti-racism charter or statement, exploration of the option to join the coalition of inclusive municipalities, petitioning other levels of government for actions conducive to our intentions and other actions viewed as viable to further the commitment to a tolerant, respectful community. And that the county of the council of the county of Perth approve and associated terms of reference to support the work of the committee and that the committee deliver its first report to council no later than February twenty eighth, twenty twenty one.
Okay, thanks, Todd. So we don't have to receive that. We're just that just as a notice of motion. Okay, any other notice of motions? Actually, you would have had to have it before today anyway, right?
Yeah, we were aware of that.
Yeah. Okay, uh, moving on. Other business. Not seeing any hands go up. Announcements. So before we go into closed session, uh, this is the meeting where you normally would state your intent if you want to run for warden. And I think we're going to do that under announcements before we go into closed session. So anybody who wishes to state the, I can go around the room here and on the screen, anybody wants to run for warden, I will ask if you intend to do that. Walter?
Don't think so.
Daryl?
No, thank you.
Doug?
No, thank you and have supported who has already submitted.
You?
Uh, no, thank you.
Todd?
Uh, no, thanks.
Doug?
Not this year.
Rhonda?
Not this year. No, thanks.
Bob?
I think we've got an excellent person in charge right now and is is sitting forward, so I will pass them.
Oh, come on. Well, I just said I intended to. I haven't put it forward yet. Today's the official day.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't, Matt must have went snuck out to the washroom, so I just can't not give him the opportunity. But in the meantime, I do intend to take this position on for another year. And I know Counselor Wilhelm and I talked about it the other night. You're one day in the last week or two. And Bob said to me, how'd you like to been the mayor and the warden this year? And I said, I'll be honest with you, I don't think I could have done it. We have had so many extra pivots and derivatives and whatnot because of COVID and different things like this. I said, Bobby, just keep around the township and I'll try and do this job. And I'll be honest with you, some days I struggle to keep up. Some days I'm getting a hundred emails and phone calls and it's just, well, you were in my place one day and the phone never stopped ringing. Again, it has been a challenge. I'm not going to lie. I've enjoyed it. I'm actually hoping that perhaps next year it might be a little more normal, but I honestly don't anticipate that based on all the numbers and and even though some of the areas are going back to stage two, I saw yesterday three and three hundred and fifty cases. I'm thinking, wow. They kind of just threw those guidelines out the window. Anyway, I just need Matt to come back and then we can move on, but
And then what about deputy?
Oh, so deputy warden, can we state intent for that for the at this meeting?
You you can't. Through the warden, you can because we have to do the the election, do the voting a little different because we're high bred. So it's it's easier for, I mean, obviously, it's easier for us if it's prepared if we can do that. And I know Tyler's been working on the logistics of how we're actually going to do the voting if there is a vote for that.
So the one thing we have discussed to some small degree is how like usually when you have your new warden, you have all your ceremony and everything else. I said, well, that's not going to happen because you can't. If you want to go out and rent a huge facility like Yard Park again or something, but I'm thinking we'll do we'll deal with this. So uh, well, you were just out the door there, Matt. We were going around the room and anyone who had intentions to run for warden had their chance to do it. And I'm just waiting for your answer now.
I'm not.
Okay. And I did tell them that I do intend to do it for one more year, so I guess I know.
Okay, deputy warden, we're going to deal with that one right now. Walter?
Well, I don't think so, but uh, advice to lawyers, uh, if you have to count ballots, uh, please don't take any indication from the last.
I've got my lawyer on speed dial. Daryl?
Uh, no, thank you.
Doug?
No, thank you. I think consistency is there and she's done a good job.
You?
Uh, again, no, thank you.
Todd?
Uh, no, thanks.
Doug?
Thanks.
Matt? Rhonda?
Come on, come on.
I can't promise that I'll be warden the next year. That's the only thing.
Well, you don't have to at this point in time.
Like, I will let my name stand, but I cannot promise that I will step up to work because as you just alluded, I, you can't do both, I don't think, with what's going on. Be mayor and the warden is just too much.
Well, it's been a handful.
Yeah, and I have enough Yeah, and I have enough on my plate now in my own personal life as well, but I, you know, I would.
We're just, I'm just worrying about deputy ward at this point in time.
But usually the progression is you go deputy to warden.
Yeah, well, that doesn't always happen.
And I just want to make that clear, so.
Okay, so you're willing to be the deputy warden?
No, thanks.
Okay, so I guess Rhonda will be the deputy warden. Thank you very much. Anyway, any other announcements? So we are going to move into closed session, so I need a motion to go into closed session at here, 10:31. Moved by Todd, seconded by Bob Wilhelm. Those in favor? It's carried. We're going to take a five-minute break. Because we have to readjust the feed and whatnot. So anybody that wants to go to the washroom or whatever, now's the perfect opportunity. Yeah, we have to go back live to finish this off.
We're recording now.
We're good?
And then we'll post on YouTube. We're posting.
Okay, so I have a bylaw 3779-2020 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council of the corporation of the county of Perth at its regular meeting held November 5th, 2020, is read a first, second and third time and finally passed November 5th, 2020. Moved by. Rhonda, seconded by Daryl. Those in favor? Carry. And I have a motion that the council meeting adjourned at 11:05. Moved by Counselor Wilhelm, seconded by Counselor McKenzie. Those in favor? Carry. Thank you very much.